Community Hall is called back to order. Unfortunately, due to the, uh, we don't have a quorum. We will continue on recess until since then we have a quorum. I'd like to thank Senator Luan for being here. And then we'll just wait until everybody else shows up. Thank you very much, and we'll continue, we'll stay on recess. Community Hall is called back to order. We will now continue on with the first round. And we'll begin with Senator Brown. Senator, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I mean, it puts us in a very interesting situation to just find out the governor has provided this money from ARP. But out of curiosity, I just wanted to clarify, when did the parties know? I mean, are we just finding out today that this money got transferred? It sounds like it was done earlier this month. And so what, did they wait for today when this, um, you know, these bills were going to be the agenda to notify us that the governor has, uh, transferred the funds? I mean, for the Veterans Affairs Office, when did you find out these funds were transferred to your account?
By the memo this morning, Senator.
So you found out this morning, like the, I don't get it. You know, Mr. Chair, it kind of makes me wonder the agenda. I don't know if the governor felt a need to usurp this issue and take credit for it. I wish he would be as expeditious with spending ARP funds and other critical things like the hospital. These issues with public health that we're hearing about from their employees, that they don't have adequate office space, not just accommodate the work they need to do, but accommodate the patients and the members of our community out there that they are supposed to be assisting. And from their own statistics, Mr. Chair is showing us that they are considerably underserving the community out there that really needs public health assistance. But one particular category was by 10,000 people less than what they were serving when the public health facility in Manila was operating. So I, I mean, I don't know, these, these little gamesmanship, I don't know if people think they're gaining some political advantage from it. But it really makes it look as to really what the real agenda is here. And certainly, we're supportive of, of the veterans having their conference. I have no issue with that. I mean, I myself has not served, but I'm a daughter of a combat veteran, so, and you know, my dad served and retired from the U.S. Navy. So I can appreciate, uh, the need for this and the need to get the information out to our community. Because there are, you know, it's hard to believe, but there are many of our, our veterans that are not fully aware of what benefits they're entitled to. And by all means, if they're eligible for it, we want them to take advantage of it because it certainly will make their quality of life. And not just theirs, but their survivors' lives. Uh, you know, my dad was also 100% disabled and, you know, now that he's passed away, and it was a arduous process. There are many times he himself said, "I don't think I want to go down this road," but I'm glad he stayed persistent. And we had to function out of the Hawaii office, uh, to finally get a determination and, you know, everything that has to do, including all the doctor visits you have to take for verification, certification of your, your ailments and how they're related, how their service related, and that whole list of things. Uh, but I have to tell you, when my dad passed away, it actually was the veterans, um, the funds that he received from that, that actually my mom, uh, received her first check within a month. Uh, my dad's retirement took like five months for my dad's Navy SEAL civil service retirement. And I said, "Thank goodness, we weren't depending on that." Because can you imagine the families that are dependent on that income and all of a sudden, you know, you don't get it for months on end because they're processing paperwork? And yet in that particular case, Veterans Affairs was the fastest. So, um, I certainly recognize the benefits from that, and I certainly wish you guys well on this convention. Uh, but I don't like the political play that's happening. I think that's what bothers them to me. Because if the governor transferred this money a couple of weeks ago, uh, I don't know why they didn't notify us and announce to everybody else that this was being done. But like I said, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to belabor it. But you know, when we see other critical needs in this government, that that ARP funding could be used to immediately address these concerns, particularly the health-related issues. I mean, look at the issues at GMH. The headline's just a couple of days ago about, uh, you know, a, a poor baby that may have, you know, whose life may have been saved had we had a more equipped capability up there and the, the physician up there that's needed in the specialty to be able to help these babies. We, we need to be saddened by the fact, especially when you look at the statistics over the last few years, of the amount of baby, the infant mortality rate on Guam. And what are we doing to address that? It's, it's not like we don't have the money, apparently. We have the money to do these type of things, but we don't have the money to address those critical needs at our hospital. It's very bothersome. And if it's that easy for the governor to do that for this veterans' conference, which we recognize is important, I mean, the bill's been introduced, we are here to deliberate this bill this afternoon. I'm sure this bill will pass with every single member of this body. Why aren't we doing that? And why is the administration not doing that for more critical needs, especially that of healthcare of existing? Our elderly, our, our infants that are being born in this community, or in some cases, not being born? What are we doing about that? That is, that, how can we be comfortable? Especially for those that have high-risk pregnancies. And there are mothers, including myself, who knew what it's like to go through a high-risk pregnancy. So I just have to put that to sense in because it's just really, to see these type of gamesmanship plays on these critical issues, particularly our veterans. They get, they get bounced around politically because, oh, everybody wants the support of the veterans. Uh, and pandering in a way that's almost disrespectful. So I don't have any further, I don't have any questions any further for the panel, Mr. Chair. But, uh, I just felt a need to have to relay what, uh, what's on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Uh, Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to the panel. Thank you very much for, uh, being here this afternoon. And as I was listening to the retiring speaker, I could have said ditto. I had two questions, um, to the panel, and I know that BBMR is not here. But I just want to say as, as a, oh, Jason, thank you. As a, um, wife, a widow of a veteran, a mother of a veteran, a grandmother of a veteran, a sibling of a veteran, um, I want to say it's, it's conventions like this that can really take us a long way. And even after hearing the previous retiring speaker speak about, about the, what the, had to go through, uh, just to get benefits and, and just to, and, and just to try and get information and to go through the outreaches. I want to say that with my husband alone before he passed, every time information and, and testings came this way here on Guam, it got denied. We go back to the States because he had a grave condition. We literally go through a lot of obstacles. But when he applied in July, October, he got approved 100%. But so many years had passed. And he, he, he never really, um, took or felt what was rightfully due to him. So I, I did want to say that, you know, there, there, based on the information we receive, I want to ask the question. There has been a representation made that the ARP funds initially allocated by the governor for the, uh, Veterans Convention will be reallocated to pay for maintenance and repairs of the, um, Veteran Cemetery. And since BBMR's letter could give an impression that this convention is now double-funded through ARP and this bill, can you give this body formal assurances that the ARP funds will be redirected to, like, the secretary? Me, to the cemetery?
Yeah, so the funding that was loaded into OVA's account was into their main operations account. So it can be used for, it, it's a general operations account for OVA, so they can direct it towards cemetery, um, in lieu of the convention.
I really appreciate that comment. I wanted to make sure. And, and one of the other things I had was, um, for both O of P and, and BBMR, uh, in, in addition to the 50,000 appropriated, uh, in, in Bill 107 and the, of course, the other bill that's coming up for the 500,000 appropriated in Bill 114, uh, this body is now poised to appropriate up to, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair, uh, I want to say about 15, right? 15.8 million, uh, to fund another three-month extension of the $100, uh, $100 credit for the energy credit program. So all these measures identify excess general fund revenues collected this fiscal year as their, um, respective funding sources. The question I was going to ask was, is there, um, sufficient excess funds to pay all these measures? I, I just wanted to make sure.
If, 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 Madam Vice, if we're going to, if we just do the simple math, it, it's, there's, there's enough. Simple math, 500 plus 50 plus 15 from 17, it's simple.
But all the other, the, the other.
No, no, just, just the three issues that you've talked about.
Okay.
It should be sufficient. The question is just getting, if we can get it past all three downtown signs off of it, it's done. That simple.
Okay. Well, thank you then for that comment. And, and the administration, maybe if you can reiterate the same thoughts as, as the chair? So maybe the follow-up to that was, these allocations are put into those different measures already? Am I saying that correct? At least for the three mentioned?
For the three mentioned, the 17.3 in the January report is enough to cover the three that you mentioned.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you. And Madam Chair, I think it was really important just to reiterate that to the listening audience, because, believe it or not, as we here on our island have 100, I mean, per capita, the highest number of enlisted personnel, military personnel, and the veterans that come from, I think that conventions like this is the best outreach to give to the people, to help us better understand the benefits that are due for those who rightly served to protect the freedoms that we live today. So thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity to ask those questions and to at least comment my personal thoughts. Sitoa Smasi.
Very welcome, Vice Speaker Barnes. Next is Senator Perez. You're recognized.
Sitoa Smasi, Madam Chair. I just, I mean, a lot of the questions were asked already. I just have one question. It's apparent that there is funding available for the convention to take place. I just am concerned about the down system, the, I believe it's the FMIS system. So I guess the question is, can BBMR-certified funds are available without the system being operational?
AS400 right now is just on, we have view access only. We do have access to the new system. We can, we're working on formatting, there's this section of the system where you can pull up the accounts, but getting the appropriation, expenditure, encumbrance amounts, we're kind of playing around with the configurations to get it to show up like it did on the AS400. We are able to see the balances as of February 2nd, but I don't think the expenditures on the new system have been updated for the last payroll from our read of it right now. But we at least, we have the ability to, we're just fine-tuning it.
So can you confidently certify funds are available? Should the Office of Veteran Affairs, you know, want to procure? Because it's almost a month away, about a month away, and, you know, procurements can take a little, a while. So are you confident that you can certify the fund is there?
For ARP, yes, I'm confident, because that was the first set of accounts that we went in to make sure were accurate, and the funds matched the last report that we transmitted on February 5th for January expenditures and encumbrances.
Okay. So then the Office of Veterans Affairs can start their procurement process confidently?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't have any further questions at this point, so Sitoa Smasi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Dwayne Siniklis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No questions. The best part of sitting in the back is all the, all the questions have been answered, and we got all the answers. But more of a comment, maybe, thank you all for being here today and assisting the veterans achieve their goals. I'd like to thank Mr. Francisco and all the other veterans' organizations trying to put this together. Madam Chair, when I came back from deployment, I've attended several of these types of conventions, and those were trying to get us all back into speed and brought us back into civilian life. So this is very critical, very important event, and also for the military spouses, you know, had to endure the lengthy deployments. So anytime we have a chance to fund and to support our veterans, it's always at the top of my list, and I thank everybody for making this happen from a veteran. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senators Siniklis. Chairman Joe Sinogasti, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the question, access to OVA, because of the message from BBMR that you've got additional 100,000, and it's in your operation account, I just want to focus on, because I'm going to support 114. You know, I'm a co-sponsor, the speaker and I, we convince the veterans, show up, testify and support, so we got your backing and you got our backing. And my concern is that, because it's going to go to the OVA, it's in the OVA account, is that, what are some of the things that you need to fix down there, the veterans anyway? Because I know you're not going to just go out there when you do the convention, you're not just going to keep spending like it's a blank check. You're going to, I know you guys are going to manage it to make sure you get the biggest bang of your dollar. But what are some of the issues that needs to get fixed? Because I know there are some things, but maybe you can mention that. It's almost like a preliminary report before we get to the budget.
Hongan, Senator, we are currently working with our state site stakeholders as well to identify the needs down at the cemetery. So underway, that should be starting soon, is the construction for the chapel, the admin building, and the maintenance building down at the cemetery. I know that with Director Sinogasti, he would like to see construction to begin, aside from that, for us to address the needs of the ground shifting up at the upper cul-de-sac where the crypts are. We have identified that we are running into some issues up there, you know, with the earthquakes and stuff. So he wants to address, to stabilize the ground up at the upper cul-de-sac. So that could be one of the projects that we can identify immediately, so.
You got a dollar amount? I'm only curious to know, I know you've got a bunch of projects there, because I've been down to the cemetery quite often, and I'm just concerned is that, as you identify your projects and you list them in priorities, you would have a dollar amount, so that you know where you need to shift? Because if you only got, let's say, 20 or 30,000 dollars left after this bill passes and so forth.
For that specific project, Senator, I don't have a, I don't have a dollar figure. I would have to connect with the director. But I know another major project that we are preparing for is the repainting, the water blasting and the repainting of all the crypts throughout the cemetery. So that could be another project where we can allocate the funds there as we need to pick up paint supplies and stuff like that.
Okay, okay. With that, you know, many of the questions have been already asked, and I'm in full support of Bill 114. And when we get to the budget, then we'll ask you more in detail. What happened to the money? Where did it go? And where are you, where are you going, where are you heading to? Okay? Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Sinogasti. Senator Canata, you're recognized.
I have no questions. I just wanted to thank the panel for being present this morning and all day, and for all your answers. I'm sure if I need to find any answer, I can go back on the YouTube channel, but I appreciate all you guys' time and presence today. Have a greedy.
Thank you, Senator Canata. Senator Fisher, do you have any questions? You have no questions? My vice chair, Senator Tello, do you have any question for the panel?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone who's here again. I apologize for this afternoon. We're having, we've been having technical difficulties with our internet this whole week, so appreciate your patience. And of course, those who are listening, your patience as well. I think everyone here had planned on voting for Bill 114. It's unfortunate that wasted a lot of your time, your precious time, to come down here and just to find out, just like us, that the money is already there, in fact, double the amount to given, be given to the veterans. It seems like if we want to get some money out of ARP, all we got to do is introduce a bill, and the next thing you know, we'll get some ARP funding. My concern here is, you know, just the, the whole situation where it's just ridiculous. We're playing political games here. Everyone sees it. Everyone watching it, just like, what the heck? What's going on? They introduce a bill, and now the governor all of a sudden decides to give some money out? Why? Because the thunder's going to be taken away from her? She should have done this a long time ago, when they were planning it in April, but didn't do it. Now she's using ARP funding for this, which has me concerned, because I've been watching ARP every month and its expenditures, and I'm very concerned, because we don't want to get to a point that we have to pay back some of this federal funding, funds that are given to us, because it was spent in the wrong way. This money was meant to help recover from COVID. And when Mr. Bazza mentioned that, you know, when the question was asked to you, Mr. Bazza, about this funds, it was revenue lost. That was the, can you explain again, please? What do you mean by that, the justification for us using ARP funding that's supposed to be meant to help recover?
There's a section in the final rules that delineates a formula for revenue loss calculation to the government during the pandemic. And if I recall, it's the three-year average prior to 2019, and then collection, and then there's a, the average growth from those three years, 17, 18, 19. If it doesn't exceed 4%, then the calculation uses a 4% counterfactual, there's a formula in the final rule. So using that formula and the law, and the actual collections versus what the formula was, was provided in the final treasury rules, is the calculation of loss. So that calculation is authorized to be used for operations.
Thank you, Mr. Bazza, for that. So how do you calculate, then? ARP funding was given to Veterans Affairs in the amount of $1.2 million, $661,957. There is still a balance, a balance as of January 31st, 2024, that has not been expended Now, if you're doing that calculation and, you know, the math on that, have you calculated the fact that money has already been given to veterans? And when you say lost revenue, I assume that it's the agency itself losing, because this appropriation was never part of the veteran's budget or calculated in any request to the, to us, OFB, to include this money into the budget? So how can you lose revenue when we didn't even ask for this or even calculate it in their budget?
The lost revenue is government of Guam revenue as a whole. So that's, so the calculation from that lost revenue is what can be used for operations from the ARP funding as a whole.
How much revenue has the Veterans Affairs lost?
It's not in regards to departments, it's government of Guam.
As a whole?
Like the general fund, tourist attraction fund, customs and quarantine fund.
And that's the justification they're using to utilize ARP funding? So it doesn't have to be with COVID or anything like that? You guys just calculate lost revenue in the government of Guam to determine how to spend that money?
Based on the final rules is definition of how to use the formula, yes.
Well, that's ironic, because we've been asking to use funding, and we've been getting the excuse that we can't use it because it's not justified. And here we are, looking at a, for a calculation put together that is based on the revenue lost in government of Guam? Wow, that's, that's a first, but I thank you for that. It's no fault of your own. It's just, another thing too, is I'm concerned, because one veteran still has 1.666, or 1 million, and if you want to answer, what are you going to do with that? Please, go ahead.
Senator, the, a bulk of that funds has already been earmarked, and that will be for the renovation of the chapel, the maintenance building, and the admin building, as I stated earlier. And the dollar amount of that comes up to be 816,000 plus. I'll have to get the exact, but of that, that's what the total price is going to cost for the construction.
Do you think you guys are going to be able to spend it in time before the deadline?
For the, for the construction, yes. I haven't been given a date when they would actually do the groundbreaking, but the construction is already set to begin. And that would be, that would encumber the 816,000 plus.
Will the veterans, like said in the public hearing, will they be overseeing this money and making sure that procurement is used?
For the.
100,000?
Yes, yes.
So it's not going to be just any ballroom that they've decided, this nonprofit has decided, you guys are going to oversee it to make sure it's spent correctly?
Yes, ma'am. It still has to go through the procurement process. So we have already begun the market research. We got one quote, as I stated earlier this morning. We're still waiting for a couple more quotes before we can submit for requisition.
My concern is now we're going to get some phone calls from other nonprofit organizations to want to do their conferences too. You know, they're going to, this, this is, you know, you're opening Pandora's Box, which was one of my concerns. I mean, I will support this bill, but we have to be ready. I mean, next thing you know, they're going to want us to fund a underwater basket-weaving convention coming up next. So we have to be very careful. There's also the concern I have with. Oh, wait, Mr. Chair, my time is up. Are we having a second round?
I'll be asking the colleagues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My colleagues, we are now in the second round, and I will begin with Senator Lohan, and then we'll go around this way, and then back up, and then to the back. Okay? Senator Lohan. No, no, we're going to go this way to the front and then to the back. I'm going to leave you till last there, Madam, Madam Vice.
Peter, you want to roll?
Senator Lohan, or you want to be first right now? I can, okay, Senator Lohan, well, Senator Tello will be first then. And we'll start from the rear and work our way up. I just want to make sure the speakers last.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and if anybody wants to yield their time to me, just let me know. At a time? Okay. The other one is BBMR, you talked about the new ASO, well, not the new ASO, the new system that you're using to replace what we currently have. How can you guarantee that if the CRR report that was just given to us recently, that was delayed because of the ASO, how can you tell how accurate that is?
Prior to the closure of the AS400, we did our own manual tracking of revenues, and they did match what DOA provided us. Next month, hoping DOA is able to extract the same type of information. I haven't had access to the revenue side on the new system just yet, so I haven't been able to check just at this moment in time.
So we were in the second quarter? Are we in the second quarter at this time?
Yes.
Okay, and it's showing right now we have in excess of 17 million. Is that, you know, kind of something that we have to really be cautious of right now, considering it's only the second quarter, and we're already seeing $5 million shortfall in, in the Healthy Futures Fund as well as some other areas?
Yeah, the shortfall in the Healthy Futures Fund is a concern. We did dive into why that might be occurring, and there were some certain transactions under business privilege tax that the Healthy Futures Fund, if it was cigarette-related, it goes towards the Healthy Futures Fund, and it stopped doing the programming for that on the AS400, which is causing a portion of why this is short. So that's, that's what we were able to determine, and, you know, it's still a concern, but we think we pinpointed the issue and hopefully resolve it soon.
So that 17 million that's sitting there, in your opinion, is a concern with regards to just, you know, seeing other, the tracking from special funds?
Just the Healthy Futures Fund only.
And just the Healthy Futures Fund, yeah.
Only, only the Healthy Futures Fund is a concern at the moment.
Right, okay. And then, you know, being, working and accounting, the concern too is just making sure that there's money there, because one thing I do know is that OPA still has not, has yet to go over prior year obligations in FY '22. go over prior year obligations in FY twenty-two. That was not incorporated in the last audit report. They're saying that, you know, X amount, I think it was like thirty-something million or that was left over, but they're showing that there are certain other obligations, prior year obligation, that's not calculated into it. So we could actually be short. I'm still waiting for OPA to come up with that report and to show us where we really are financially, but seventeen is not a whole lot to be comfortable with at this point. With regards to Veterans Affairs and the, the conference, how is Veterans Affairs really going to reach out to those who don't even show up at these events? Because I know that they've had several events last year and even smaller nonprofits who've gotten together, you know, Purple Hearts, all those other ones. How are you going to push to, to really make a difference in getting those veterans who really need service and need information? Can you kind of explain what the issue is really when trying to reach out to these veterans?
Thank you for that question, Senator. So interestingly, we have had the same discussion with the director prior to his departure to his conference. And we have suggested that we reach out to the commanders of the various veteran organizations to identify veterans within their organization, you know, that could, could really benefit attending the convention, most especially for the younger generation of veterans, you know, where we're, we're having such a very difficult time capturing that, that data. So we're really going to reach out to the commanders of the vet organizations out there and work with them very closely to be sure that they identify their members and send them to the convention. Because we have a lot of the older generation veterans that, you know, are already knowledgeable of the claims process and, and benefits process and, and what have you. So we, we still have a lot of veterans out there that are not sure, they just don't know where to go as far as, you know, making a simple claims process. So we are going to work closely with the Veteran Commission as well as the Veteran Commanders to identify.
If for some reason that, because I, I know how important this is, it's about the outreach that's needed to those individuals who just, for one reason or another, you know, PTSD, they just don't want to be around crowds. You know, a conference is a place that they really don't want to be around. I've talked to several vets and it's about just going and knocking on their doors and sitting with them, you know, one-on-one where they feel comfortable. I just hope that the funding that's being used for this, if there's anything that you can do is to provide that kind of outreach to those who will never show up at those conferences. And those are the ones that really need the help. They don't know what's going on. So if there's any way the director, I mean, you know, Mr. Menno, you have, you hit it on the nail, you know, the head on the nail by making that comment and how difficult it is. So I'm just hoping that there is some funding that you can utilize to make that effort after the conference to move into those areas, okay? And the spouse retreat, can you give me a more of example of what this spouse retreat is going to do for, for this conference?
So with the Women's Spouses Retreat, we have identified to put together a, a three-day event that would cater and nurture the spouses of the veterans. And we are, we are looking at setting up talks and, and breakout sessions to also identify mental health awareness as well as financial management. We have speakers set up where they, we could assist the spouses in creating what they're, what the committee is calling a me time for the spouses. Because as we all know, when deployment happens for the veteran, there's also a deployment that happens at the home where the, the spouse remains and they are in charge of the household, you know, and, and that's various things, taking care of their children, the upkeep of the, the home, the bills. So we want to engage our spouses to form a camaraderie of professionals, you know, men or women that could assist, they could assist each other in that manner. And, and maybe even for like a support group, you know, when their spouses are deployed, they're able to lean on each other and, and get moral support, emotional support. So we have a very good outline for that weekend. And it's gonna, we're going to try to address every aspect of that conference to, again, to include mental health awareness, how to deal with stress, how to deal with financial management, et cetera, like that.
Mr. Menno, doesn't the Veterans Affairs already provide that kind of service right now?
For the spouse, for, for that, for the health side of the house, unfortunately, no. The State Office provides the state benefits as well as the assistance of the veterans for the claims process. And then when the veteran who's a spouse passes on, our office provides assistance with the spouse for the D I C part where the spouse is able to file for benefits for them.
Okay, I, I would hope that the Veterans Affairs can, you know, offer more services, you know, that this conference, whatever is a takeaway, that it's incorporated in the Veterans Office.
Very true. And, and currently we are on, in talks with our, our federal stakeholders such as CBAC and the TESAN Office. And you had mentioned about outreach. And so that is one of our upcoming projects that we want to identify so that we can work collaboratively with CBAC and TESAN Office. So we can go out to the communities and hopefully capture the data of the younger veterans. So that's in the works. There's still a lot of planning in that, you know, but.
You know, Mr. Menno, I had an opportunity to, to do some research on all the other veterans conferences in, in different jurisdictions, California, Miami. And I found that the money they raised for this convention was actually by sponsorship. AT&amp;T, I think there was another major company that also provided funding for these conferences. So I think maybe as we, for next year or a year before, that we get the veterans to also look at sponsorship, you know, to provide that in case, you know, the money's not continuing to rain out of ARP funding, that we need to look at that. But right now, I mean, it's, it's in dire need, I think. I think we're going to get a lot out of this conference to be able to assist the Veterans Office as well. And then also, if you can update the ARP listing, the report that's been given to us, because right now you said encumbered, right? The only thing I see encumbered from one point two million dollars is only twenty-two thousand dollars on this report. I'll be happy to share the report with you, but you can get it online and look through it, okay? Only thing that's been, expenditures transferred out is one hundred and seventy-two million, but only encumbered is twenty-two thousand. And this money has a timeline to it, so. Well, thank you so much, everyone, for your, the opportunity and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Senator Fisher, do you have any questions? None? Senator Cananda, do you have any questions? Karen? Senator Snickers, do you have any questions? Okay, Senator Paris. Too late, we move on, next. Senator Blas, do you have any questions? None. Senator Duanez, do you have anything?
Sido Smasi, Mr. Chairman. And I, I think with the way the discussion's been going, just to cut to the chase, really it looks as though this will just end up being a supplemental appropriation. So I think we just should call it for what it is. So I would like to ask Mr. Baz, I mean, simply put, since the money has been identified under another funding source for the same purpose, and you mentioned several times that if this appropriation goes through, the money can be repurposed and journal vouchered, I guess, to another account for the purposes of, or identified for other purposes. I, I just want to be clear that that's pretty much what we're doing here. Would you concur?
Yeah, so the hundred thousand from the ARP was used for, or intended for the convention. If the fifty does come in, the hundred thousand was loaded to OVA's main account, so it's not designated solely for a convention. So they can repurpose those funds for cemetery work or anything that they do have immediate needs for.
Okay. So I don't know that we do anything with the bill, Mr. Chairman, and I will continue to deliberate and then see where it goes. But I just think it's appropriate that, you know, those who keep a sharp eye on our financial resources and are monitoring, you know, what we do, particularly in the community as a whole is, you know, should this bill pass? And once again, like I said, I support the intent of, of, of everything. In fact, the intent is so supported, it's already supported because there's more than adequate funding that's been transferred. So, I mean, maybe I'll give the panel an opportunity to comment if you choose, but I mean, this is what it is. I mean, and if you have a need for the, for the resources, simply put, this is what we're doing then, is, is giving you a supplemental appropriation because what's identified in this bill is already funded. Okay, as long as there's concurrence on that, Mr. Chair, that's what we're doing. I mean, so we're going to call it what it is and see where it goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duanez. Senator Parsons, do you have any questions?
No questions, sir.
Thank you. Senator Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I did have a, just a couple of questions. But first I wanted to read off this press release from the Office of the Governor that was issued on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Leon Guerrero Tenori Administration secures eight point two million dollars to expand and improve the Guam Veterans Cemetery. And I'll just go ahead and read a couple of the paragraphs here. The Leon Guerrero Tenori Administration announces plans to expand and improve the Guam Veterans Cemetery with a federal grant of eight million, two hundred thousand dollars awarded by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs National Cemetery Administration. The Guam Office of Veteran Affairs will use the grant to fund the construction of above-ground crypts, grading, drainage, irrigation, landscaping, and supporting infrastructure starting in January twenty twenty-three at the Guam Veterans Cemetery. And so I was made aware of this grant in this press release by several veterans. And they asked me to write a letter because as the press release has stated, these improvements were supposed to start in January of last year. However, the veterans who attended the ceremonies had expressed to me that they didn't see any forward motion on these improvements that, again, were supposed to start in January twenty-three. So I did write a letter in January of twenty twenty-four. Unfortunately, I didn't receive a response, but basically the letter was to the Director, San Augustine, writing to inquire about the status of the eight point two million dollar grant awarded to OVA by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs National Cemetery Administration. I attached a copy of the press release, which I just referred to. And I wrote, "Many veterans who are aware of the awarding of this grant have reached out to my office requesting I follow up on the projects that the Leon Guerrero Tenori Administration said would start a year ago. Please provide any update on the status of this grant and the projects the administration has said it would be used to fund." And so I was able to get a little bit of information about the status of this grant. And I don't know if anyone on the panel could provide more. I was told that there were several contracts that were being reviewed by the Attorney General Office, but I didn't hear anything in the testimony so far today that, that referenced this grant. And I was kind of scratching my head because what was referenced was this desire to maybe take the fifty thousand that we're trying to appropriate with this bill and then take the hundred thousand that the governor has given over in ARP funds and then to, to use that to do the cemetery work, as Mr. Menno had stated. But I guess, so I don't know who the appropriate person would be to ask, would I, maybe Mr. Baz, do you have any information on the status of this grant? Has OVA received it? Where are we with this eight point two million dollar grant?
I'm, I'm not aware of the status of it. I do recall that it required a match. I don't know if it was a ten percent match or a fifteen percent match, but I can look into it when I get back to the office and ask the analysts that handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Baz. Mr. Menno, did you have any information on, on this grant?
Senator, in regards to the grant, I would have to defer that to the director. In fact, as we speak, he is stateside, meeting with the federal granters and stakeholders in particular regards to the, to that grant. So I would have to defer that to him.
Okay, Sido Smasi, Mr. Menno. Yeah, that's, uh, this is a little surprising to me because, you know, much criticism was levied at the legislature relative to our support of the veterans during the conversation we're having about the construction of the new hospital site. And I, I wrote this letter because it was announced by this administration that they were going to begin these projects over a year ago. And I don't know, have we, have we broke ground on any of these proposed projects, Mr. Menno? Because in your testimony, it kind of sounds like we're going to break ground in April, I think is what you said.
So in regards to the construction for the chapel, the maintenance building and the admin building, that's coming out of the ARP, I'm sorry, the ARP account. And so had I said earlier, that is the eight hundred, sixteen thousand plus. But with regards to the grant, I'll let Director San Augustine be the one to provide.
Thank you, Mr. Menno. Again, just, you know, I didn't receive a response and the veterans are still asking about the status of not just the grant and these projects because I know that part of why I received this grant was we had heard very alarming news that we might run out of space at the Veterans Cemetery. And so that's why I think not only receiving this grant is important, but Lana, what's the use in receiving it if we don't even know where it's at or how we're going to spend the money? So any information that could be provided on the status of this very significant grant? And again, that's why I'm scratching my head because we're in receipt of this, you know, over eight million dollars to improve PD Veterans Cemetery. And we're hearing from the acting director that we're now looking at ARP funds for, for some of these projects. And I think the veterans deserve honesty and they definitely deserve to know why. So Sido Smasi, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Burnett. I'd have my staff take note of that. We will ask that when we come up to their budget, when we discuss all the funds they've gotten and what they'll be asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker.
Sido Smasi, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you to those who are here from the Veterans Agency and also from BBMR. And I'm following up on the question asked by my colleague, so, or colleagues regarding the, so one point two million in ARP funds has been allocated as of January to the Office of Veterans Affairs, one point two million, three hundred thousand for salaries, about nine hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred forty-seven thousand for contracts. So hopefully that is going to the chapel and the maintenance building, as you discussed. And then hopefully there's still that eight million dollar grant available for some of the same projects that you've described and, and the crypts, I'm hoping. I wonder if that's for the expansion as well. But anyways, I just wanted to ask, yeah, that you've accounted for all this money, the ARP money? All right. I just want to reiterate again, Mr. Chair, the timeline from how I see this, what happened. There was a request for forty thousand dollars, not just to me, but also to the governor. We were all at the same function when this request was made by Colonel Nick Francisco, President of the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter Six Six Eight. He's also the commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart on Guam. And from Mr. Jose San Augustine, Director of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs. We introduced the bill on May tenth, twenty twenty-three, just a few days after that request for a convention that was planned in November of twenty twenty-three. The fiscal note was received in June twenty twenty-three. The veterans spent time calling senators, asking for a public hearing and urging passage of this bill. The public hearing was announced on February first, twenty twenty-four. And we found out today that on February second, one hundred thousand in ARP money was delivered to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs without any announcement as to its purpose and without really any knowledge of the representatives here that that was transferred. of the representatives here that that was transferred. The public hearing was held on February 5th, and in that public hearing, as I said earlier, they took the time to come down and testify, as you said, Mr. Chair, the Director of the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, the liaison officer for the veterans and the governor, Mr. Nick Francisco, the commander of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, and at least eight other veterans were there in support of this request and urging our action for this April convention. At this point, it's February, the convention's in April. The committee report was promptly filed on February 12th. We moved it on to the agenda on February 19th, on our first day of session. And today, BBMR notified you, Mr. Chair, of appropriations, that the governor had transferred that one hundred thousand dollars for this exact same purpose, the island-wide convention, and that, that's, today's February 21st. This is nineteen days after the money was sent supposedly to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs, ten months after the request was made, and this is ARP money that we've had for several years now. The convention, again, is on April 6th, 2024. I believe that valuable time and resources have been needlessly expended because of the lack of communication from the governor to the Office of Veterans Affairs and to these And not just our time, but these veterans' time. It's the veterans who have really been the one leading this, pursuing this effort, pursuing the convention. They see the benefit in it. And I'm happy that the governor would, at the last minute before the hearing, found the money. It's just a shame that the, that these people who came to testify and the veterans who came to support the bill were made to come down and testify and wait from May 2023 to February 2024, ten months to receive ARP money that the governor had all along. You know, I'm, we're going to have to move on, but I just don't feel that that's right, that our veterans are going to come down and have to ask for something that we had all along. If they had that all along and they intended to transfer it, why didn't they just do that? Why did they have to let them come and ask or, you know, why do that? Could have been given months ago. They could have planned months ago. I'm sincerely hoping that this convention is not going to be politicized. I want it that the government, the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs and the veterans are able to achieve their goal of reaching the twenty-eight thousand-plus veterans that they, they testified, they estimate on Guam, that they will be able to bridge those gaps of information and resources for those who are not availing of those, and that these veterans, our veterans, will feel the support of our entire community and that no more games will be played, Mr. Chair. Sido Smasi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Being that this ends our second round, we will now move to the third round. We will like to excuse the panel. We will have a short recess. Currently, we do not have any amendments. Okay, so I'm only looking forward that, I'd like to thank the panel for being here. Thank you very much. And for the panels on my left, please don't go far because we have another bill after this. Should be just as quick as this one. And then, and then what we'll do is quick recess, then we just come back strictly, mainly comments. That's all we're left with because there's no amendments, okay? So hopefully not everybody needs to comment, and then we can move quick on this, and we can move this and send it to the voting file, hopefully. Thank you. We're in a quick recess.